Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. We're the, having our work session on 10/27/2020. We're gonna go over what we're gonna be doing next week. So, welcome to all of those who are joining us via social media. And Dr. Huff, can you hear us?
And can you hear me?
Yes, very good, thank you. Okay. Dr. Huff, you'll have the invocation next Tuesday.
Yes ma'am.
And we'll be approving the minutes and the agenda. We'll have a Buildings and Grounds report. We're gonna have a superintendent's recognition.
We will, we're back.
Excited about that. Have we had any requests thus far to appear before the board?
No ma'am.
Alright. Well, we'll go ahead and get started with reports. Dr. Ken Green, looks like you're up for Support Services.
Yes ma'am, the Community Message Report is there for your review. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have to say.
Okay, very good. Dr. Thompson, do you have an enrollment report for us?
Yes ma'am, the enrollment report is posted and there for your review.
Alright. And Ms. Houston, Business Services report.
Good evening, this is the YOU. We have our Enlist Report tonight, our enrollment between 10:00 and 24:00 in the night for the month of October. So we have Adventum is the first one. It's paid out of Consolidated Federal Funds, $17,665. It's for Study Island, exact path descriptions. Kennedy Elementary School, and that's an annual license. Again, Adventum Consolidated Federal Funds, $15,997.70. And that's for exact path license and reading page. And that is at Yargo Elementary School, and that again is an annual license. The Coney River, I think it's pronounced agistic. This is paid out of Title IV Federal Funds, $17,700. And it's Georgia Youth Science and Technology Center, and it's our annual license. And that is for District Wide K through 8 grades to learn the following. And then we have Adventum for a third time, Consolidated Federal Funds, $4,102.40. For exact path license and classroom teaching at Kennedy Elementary School. And again, that's an annual license to that school. The John Wiley Institute is paid out of the General Fund for $15,680. And that's 150 copies of AP Human Geography Book textbook for BASSA. And then Tyler Technologies was paid out as General Fund for $11,142. And that is our units, our accounting software system management support. And that is of course District Wide, and that's an annual license. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our PPE update, not much has changed. We got some more state contributions of our cloth adult mask. We got some more hand sanitizer stations. I think everything else, I don't think there was very much more that we needed at this point. But we do have funds available if we do need additional supplies. And the state is really doing a good job giving us some masks and sanitizers and some chemicals and foggers. So, we appreciate all that we get from them. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Perno, System Operations Report.
Good evening. Our report tonight is centered on the progress of the Westside Middle School addition. And we've got photos there for you. The milestones that we've achieved here recently. We've begun the concrete slab on grade and stormwater completion. And also have the site stabilization well underway. In these next 30 days, we expect that we will have the slab on grade complete. And the structural steel 95% complete. Normally, preface the, you know, look at photos by saying those are a few days old. And there's no exception to this month. You got those. This is kind of takes care of the rest of the under slab work there. They're grabbing place for the slab and the final under slab coating right there. Start this slab four there, they normally do these, there's a picture of about 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning when they do that. Black on wood, red on paper, just paper jet. There's the steel on the site. And I was there this morning, just kind of, and they've already got a good bit of that in the air. Got the crate out there, they're swinging the steel around, so come along real quick. So that's our report, I think if you have any questions, go ahead now.
Joe, did you say you were out there at 3:00 in the morning taking pictures? Was that?
Who else took that picture? I think about 7:00 or more. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Teaching and Learning Report, Dr. Moten.
Good evening, I'm welcome Mr. Lee May to the podium to give us an overview of the BASSA Cultural Connections Performing Arts Series.
Thank y'all for our opportunity to share this. In addition to the Teaching and Learning Report, we have three attachments that have been shared with you. Give you a few additional details about this Performing Arts Series. One is the press release that was sent out to the public through radio station news and a few other venues. Second attachment that you have is the series announcement that shows closer details. All four shows that will be coming to the amphitheater. Times and dates, and then a fourth word about the artists. And again, curriculum to speak of what's going there. And then your third attachment is the concert poster for this week's upcoming event. If they will cooperate with us, being passed on through tomorrow. The Ah Shirley Irish Music and Dance Trea. This program was initiated by the Georgia Council for the Arts, vibrant community break program. It came across my desk in August, which was defined as a way to cultivate the growth of vibrant, thriving Georgia communities through the arts in four ways. By catalyzing economic development, enriching individual lives, building community vitality, and telling the story of the impact of arts in Georgia. So, I immediately reached out to Dale Simpson, the Principal of Alberro Arts and Sciences Academy. And we agreed that the grant aligned perfectly with the shared vision of BASSA and the School Systems Innovation Campus, including the Innovation Amphitheater. So with the help of BASSA's administration and input from their performing arts teachers, we put together a grant proposal that would kickstart an annual Performing Arts Series that would take place at the amphitheater, but not only committed previous goals from the Georgia Council for the Arts Program, but also connected directly to the performing arts programs that are specific to BASSA's campus. The Georgia Council for the Arts recently announced that they also recognize the value of the proposal and awards the maximum grant amount of $5,000 for the program. The grant guidelines did require a 50% cash match in order to be eligible. And thanks to the help of Chandler Round Treaty, Ms. Ellen P Treaty, Ms. Cole Valas, and Sheriff Perry, who helped share this opportunity with a number of our partners in the community, we have already exceeded the cash match requirements of the grant. And if y'all would like to mention those folks that have gotten behind us in our community, who've received sponsorships and partnerships with Zaxby's, Van Gogh's K, Peach State Federal Credit Union, Riverhead's Church, Akins Ford, Wander Marrow Community Theater, Georgia Power, Jackson EMC, and Arts Town Learning. So, with the support of the sponsors and the Georgia Council for the Arts, vibrant community grant, we're able to bring some very special performances to the community. At a very affordable price of only $10 per ticket. No parking fees, no reason to travel to Athens or Atlanta or further to see these pretty prestigious artists. As you can see from the attachments, we'll have the Atlanta Opera, Johns Creek Symphony Orchestra, Full Radiance Dance Company, and this week the Ah Shirley Irish Trea. Irish Trea has went a step further and has agreed for their national champion Irish step dancer to come teach a master class to our dance students at BASSA as well. So, this is extending beyond just an entertainment opportunity, but it's extending to classroom connections as well. I could go on about the individual benefits that each of these bring to our community, the experience that they're gonna bring to the innovative curriculum out at BASSA and the innovative campus. That I can save those discussions for later if you wish. Didn't want to share that the events will be held in accordance with all your current public health guidelines. Total ticket sales of each of these events are restricted to only 500 of the typical 2,000-plus seats that are at the amphitheater, they're in social distance pairs. Following strict sanitation and distancing guidelines. And just wanted to thank y'all for letting me share this with you guys. I'd have to answer any questions that you might have about the series.
Just, do you have a rain date for Thursday?
We do.
Okay, when would that, when would that be?
The rain date is 10:00 to be set for the 12th. With each passing hour, the rain percentage drops lower and lower and goes earlier in the day. And we just don't want to cancel on this opportunity to perform on the date we set. So, we're gonna make a call tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to say, first of all, thank you, Lee, to you for finding this and bringing it to us. And I also want to say that I'm very excited. This is a good first step. And when we were partners in building this amphitheater and this entire campus out there, these are the type of things for the school, for the schools we were thinking along the lines of. And this is a great first step, even in the midst of a pandemic and having to limit some things. It's just worked out really well. So, it's great work on you all for bringing it in. And I'm just excited with this first step into bringing this and more to that amphitheater.
It's already motivated a lot of innovative thinking in our classrooms at BASSA for new lesson plans that are being brought to the table that will get closer to the other events. Each of these were carefully selected from the Georgia Council for the Arts roster of numerous artists. The Full Radiance Dance Company, for example, is a dance company, it's a professional dance company who dancers are a combination of professional dancers with and without physical handicaps. And their messaging is really powerful. What they're able to do, Johns Creek Symphony Orchestra bringing strings to our students. You know, orchestrate and strings package of adding that to our finance program is something that's been discussed. And so, this is something that will open the door to that. The Atlanta Opera will be performing with Barbara Seville, and they'll be doing that bilaterally in both English and in Spanish. And that's a powerful testament to how the art form can communicate in many languages. So, it's just, I'm really excited. I'm shutting down, but I'm just really excited.
It's a great thing, not just for the school system, for the entire community.
Thank you, the kids are so excited. They're so excited.
Where might someone get tickets for this?
Yes, I read from the same ticketing system that our schools use for athletic events, it's GoFan. So, it's GoFan.co. It's not .com, it seems strange, it's .co, but it's GoFan.co. And from there, you can choose the Alberro Arts and Sciences Academy. There's QR codes on all of the flyers, and there's a great news article that Nicole put together for us that had the link to all the events.
And there's also an app for GoFan too, that you can download into your phone and use that. That's the way I did it, so.
Chris, this is Butch. What opportunities will there be for students to attend any and all of these events?
Well, we hope they'll, that they'll attend all of them. It's being at 7:00 in the evening, it's open definitely to students. And it's been hyped by the teachers and the schools pretty extensively, so.
It has, and a number of our performing arts teachers are using these, affording these tickets to purchase tickets as teachers and use them as PBIS rewards, even just to get students to try something out that they may not have tried out on their own. So, I'm just really thankful for so many people getting behind it there. Thank you.
Alright, next we have, looks like Old Business, don't think we have any clarifications of previous items. So, we'll go to Old Business. We'll be discussing the policy revision, JAA Equal Educational Opportunities. Dr. Green.
Yes ma'am, actually for all four of these, they were placed on the table at the last meeting. And for public review, we've not had any comments on any of the boards. So, we would ask that you take these off the table and adopt them at the meeting on Tuesday.
Very good. Does anybody have any objection to putting that on, all four of these on a consent agenda? Alright, good. Those will go on the consent agenda. Under New Business, AP Human Geography Textbook Adoption. Dr. Jennifer Wood.
Good evening. So, tonight I am recommending to the superintendent for his recommendation to the board to place those following textbook on the table for review and consideration for adoption. The Bear County School System currently offers advanced placement human geography to our high school students. And there was a need to select an updated text. All of the teachers of the designated course were actively involved in the selection process, and the consensus was reached, and it was also brought to each school governance team. And they have endorsed the recommendation as well. The selection committee has agreed that they would like to recommend the new textbook. It's called Human Geography: A Spatial Perspective. This text emphasizes learning through inquiry, establishes real-world content through storytelling of National Geographic explorers and photographs. Offers original National Geographic quantitative and spatial information. And has formative assessments that increase student confidence and familiarity with the course and then the assessments. The price of the text is $175.75, but that total price includes the teacher edition, a teacher assessment companion, so they're getting assessments with that, the student text, and digital resources for up to six years when we purchase the textbooks. As of now, there is not a financial impact, so we're not gonna be requesting money this school year to purchase this textbook. And we will be looking at ordering some of these eventually for BASSA and some of the other high schools. And so, this would sit for public review. We'll put one copy out at the front, like we've typically done with textbook reviews for public review. And then it'll sit for 30 days. And then if you guys accept that, then we would move forward with the adoption of the textbook.
How many of these will we eventually be purchasing?
It'll vary based on what's offered at each high school. So, currently at BASSA, they only need around 90. And then Appalachian will need some next school year. And then potentially Wander Marrow. So, but each year, those schools request AP textbook funds. So, it'll vary, just depend on what they have for enrollment. We won't know that until the spring of what they'll need for new textbooks.
But, the price is set at $175.75 for, no matter when we order?
That's the current price for right now, I'm sure. If we wait years down the road, which we would not want to. We would want to have these in place for next school year, so that they would have them to teach from for next school year.
So, what is this textbook replacing?
This textbook is replacing the Wiley, ooh, and I don't have the name of it in front of me. But it's replacing what they currently have, it's outdated. Actually, if we were to order the same textbook, they only had a, which is very strange, a loose leaf version of the textbook. And so, that did not seem like it would last very long, since we keep these textbooks for many years. So, that was kind of what sparked sort of the desire to, it's time to update, let's see what resources are out there. And so, this is what they reviewed, three different texts, and this is the one they're recommending.
Did the school governance teams actually review the texts?
They, each school had all three of the texts available, because they each received sample copies. And so, then they shared with their governance team what was recommended from the consensus of the selection committee, which all three schools were involved in reviewing this copy.
Okay. Do you have more than one copy of that textbook?
I do.
Good, because I'll need one copy tonight.
You are sitting at my chair, ready to take home, and there's one for us to put on review when it's ready.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Any other questions?
How long has, how long have we been teaching this particular class?
A while. It comes and goes, like the enrollment of it varies. But we've been, it's been a course that we've offered for a while.
Okay, you know how old the textbook that we're currently using is? It seemed like it was, of course, time flies when you're having fun, but it doesn't seem like it's been that long ago since we adopted.
It's been more than three years, because I went back through my predecessor's documents, and this AP Human Geography was not a book that she had recommended any time that I could go back.
Could you give me a date on that?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Now, you said we're gonna order nine, are we only gonna order nine right now?
Yeah, that's all we need right now.
Is the $175, is that gonna be, I mean, when we come back and order for Appalachian, Wander Marrow, are we still only gonna pay $175 for those?
Yeah. Because we'll be able to order those in next year's budget, so we'll be able to order them in the summer for next year.
For next year?
Yep. So, good. Any other questions? I will get you that, that date.
Geography's typically pretty apolitical, so we'll probably be alright.
You would think. You would think.
Welcome to America these days, right? You never know.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so, we will be voting to put that on the table for 30 days. Item number two is Units of Study Materials, Kennedy Elementary. It's Dr. Beal in here. There he is.
Yes, thank you, good evening, everyone, it's good to see you all. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna have to rely a little bit on my notes over here. As I was getting ready to come join you, my son kept his record perfect and wrecked his current car. So, very hard he is now to have an accident. I apologize, I meant to break a car.
You okay?
He's fine, he's up in the gym. And I was really good at it. You want to also chip in and have him like, you know, car and chip? That is not an opinion, that's not. The item I bring for you is Kennedy Elementary is looking to continue to expand their classroom library of books that include decodable texts and other reading level texts. As it goes along with the units of study. This is an item that has come before you both at the district level, where we try to get a certain number of books at every school. But each school is also continuing to try to expand their personal school, classroom libraries of books, and that will be an ongoing process. But it's gonna take some time. As you know, we still have books available in Students' Federal Medicine, but these are more books that help students learn how to read or to improve their ability to read based on their current level and books just above their level, and even sometimes books just below their level. So, they're leveled based on what the kids need. And they also have loaded the ratings for the decodable texts that's important to read. Total line of impact is $29,293 at Kennedy Elementary. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions? No? Alright, thank you. Third item is Additional Chrome Books. John Stinkley.
Yes ma'am, thank you. At the October 6, 2020 Board Meeting, the Board approved the purchase of HP Chromebooks from low-bid respondent AITA Technologies in the amount of $290.07 per unit for one model, $218.13 for the other model, and the further use of the response through the end of this calendar year, subject to normal board purchasing protocols. Subsequently, additional requests for Chromebooks came in, just shy of $17,000 from County Line Elementary Consolidated Funds, and $39,000 and change from CTE Funds. Because this combined is over $25,000 over the Board approval threshold, we're bringing this to you for approval now. So, the recommendation is the superintendent recommends authorizing the use of the October 6 Board Approved Chromebook RFP Award to low-bid respondent AITA Technologies for an additional purchase of $56,049.45 of HP Chromebooks for County Line Elementary and CTE Program.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Well, the next one it looks like is E-Rate Network Switch Request for Proposal?
So, just as a recap for anybody who isn't always familiar with it, the E-Rate Program is a federal program that pays for certain types of technology. They come in two categories. Category one is basically internet connectivity. Category two is products such as buying network cabling, buying network switches and firewalls and so forth. The federal E-Rate Program provides funding to school districts in five-year cycles for upgrading or expanding technology infrastructure meeting certain category requirements, such as network cabling and hardware. And the five-year cycle we're in now ends the year we're in currently. For this five-year cycle, using our remaining funds, we're going to upgrade our existing Aruba network switch infrastructure district-wide. So, we published an RFP and nine vendors responded, as shown. The thing with E-Rate, E-Rate-based purchases is the E-Rate Guidelines allow vendors to respond with alternative product offerings. Whereas if we were doing our own RFP, for private funding, we would restrict it only to the products line we were looking for. But with E-Rate, we have to allow alternative product offerings. And so, the responses can then be evaluated not only on cost, but also other factors such as suitability to task, compatibility with your existing environment and so forth. Our RFP specified technology from Aruba. Throw the three low-bid respondents offered alternative solutions from Ruckus and Extreme. We evaluated them and scored them fairly low on the final evaluation submitted to E-Rate for approval, primarily due to two factors. One, incompatibilities with our existing district network infrastructure. What would actually result in slower speeds on the network? The whole point of upgrading our network is to be faster. And two, lower ratings on the Gartner Group Magic Quadrant Assessment. Gartner Group is a group that does yearly assessments of various technologies. Tells you who the various industry leaders are and who's lagging behind in areas of completeness of vision, ability to execute. Basically, it's an overall review of the product line. So, of the remaining respondents that were offering Aruba network technology as we requested in the RFP, low-bid respondent MXN met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. E-Rate approved our request to award the response to MXN and committed to funding 80% of the project, leaving 20% for the district to fund out of splotch funds. So, what that looks like is, it's basically just over a million dollars total in product. $831,000 of that is going to be paid for by the E-Rate Program. No cost to the district. We will pay $260,523.20 for district splotch technology funds. So, our recommendation is that the superintendent recommends approving the purchase of network switch hardware from E-Rate-approved respondent MXN of Woodstock, Georgia, in the amount of $1,092,363.20. 80% funded by the federal E-Rate Program, leaving the district responsible for the remaining $260,523.20.
And if I heard you correctly, we have that money budgeted through East Splotch, is that correct?
We have it. Yes ma'am.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the board members? All right. Next item is C-FIT and Transportation Improvements Architect Recommendation. Mr. Furno.
We are asking the superintendent to recommend kind of beforehand Matthew's more or design work or renovations needed at C-FIT and Transportation. This firm has formed quite a bit of work for us in the past. They submitted to us architectural services three years ago, and their fee remains the same, as it was at the time of that, it's middle, it's 5%. They've worked on projects as far back as been them in County Line and as recent as BASSA and a number of projects in between. So they've done find out for us, and we've established a stated cost limitation for the design work for both projects in total at $100,000 to be funded through SLOSS. And in the rationale section there, we go into a little bit of detail, but essentially the work at C-FIT would be based more in repair and maintenance type work, whereas in transportation, that's really more of a renovation type of scope. So that's, just to kind of break that down a little bit further, that's what we're looking at there. And it's important for us, as it has been with all these other projects, to get the design professional on board and in the process of examining, planning for the projects. Next month, we expect to be able to bring to your recommendation upon instruction manager to help us with these projects, so that'll be another partner on this team. And so before we do any construction, of course, as we always do, we'll bring forward a guaranteed maximum price for each project that we'll ask you to approve. So this is really just one of the first steps in looking at these projects and planning for it.
Any questions? Anybody?
When do you see you starting these projects? Do you have a start date that you want to get started?
We'd like for them to follow the same sort of pattern that we have for Auburn, Holston Back, and Appalachian, where it'd be summer 21. That would be our goal, but they don't necessarily have the same level of urgency. May not fit that exactly, but that's.
If you work it in.
All right. Does anybody have any objection with placing these six items on the consent agenda for next week? We're good with that? All right, we'll do that. Now, there is one other thing, other authorization for committees to meet, we need to do that, but we need to have a full board meeting to go over the superintendent's review, which was due in August, and as you know, we put that off because of COVID and school not starting and having a few other things at the top of the list. So I'm suggesting either November 10 or 12, or the 17th or 19th. Those are Tuesdays or Thursdays, which seem to be the best days for a meeting. Normally, the first meeting takes about two hours.
November 12 is the tentative rain-out day for the BASSA thing, so maybe we should stick to the 10th.
Okay, so maybe we should just mark through that. November 10, the 17th, or the 19th? Let's pleasure the board.
Well, the 17th is a regular board meeting. Correct or am I wrong about that?
That's correct.
Don't.
No, it's a work session.
Oh, is that the work session? Rule out the 17th. We now have November 10 or the 19th, because I don't really feel like a five-hour session.
So this is to do what at that time, Ms. Stevens?
We will do the superintendent's review for the annual review.
We will have reviewed our packages and bring those, our reviews, to this meeting?
Yes. We've had those packages a long time. I think we got those in August. If you have misplaced yours or didn't get it, let me know, we'll get you a copy. Basically, the packet is just like the review from last year, and we'll score those and look at anything that we want to change going forward next year to maybe simplify that process a little bit. I think that was the consensus of the board, too.
I could do the 10th, but the 19th would be better for me.
Yeah.
I like the 19th better. It was more time.
Yeah.
All right, so everyone's good with the 19th? We'll meet here at the board office. I'm sorry? 6 o'clock, unless anybody wants to do it earlier.
No.
6 o'clock on the 19th, it is. Everybody okay with that? You'll mark that on your calendars, that would be great.
Ms. Lynn, we also need to have a school lunch committee meeting. We have, the grant that we've had is paid for school lunches up until, I believe, December when we come back. Is that correct, Dr. McMichael? We have the grant that's paying.
The federal government has now extended through the rest of the school year.
Oh, wonderful.
So we're in good shape there. Do want to give a shout out to, we still do, if you have your free and reduced, anyone out there listening in, have your free and reduced paperwork. We do still need to get that in, even though it's free for everyone right now, because that has a lot to do with going forward, how much funding will go to each school from the federal government after this is over. So that is important, those forms get in. I think the deadline is actually the 30th, so we've got a pretty good number, but we are a little shy than where we normally are.
Okay, so let's put a pin in that then, because I think we just need to get some good information on where we are, so we'll kind of know where we're headed. Kind of our game, that awesome news that it's been extended. Yay.
Okay, good. All right. At this time, we need to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. I'll need a vote on this, Ms. Stevens. Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right, unanimous. All right, at this time, we'll go into executive session. Thank you all for being here tonight.